And they're ready to come and speak out on their feet at the same time. At the same time, because the public will feel happy and grateful and appreciate of the service that they get from you, right? So it's that type of discussion. Um, however, sorry, if we miss, uh, if we need to do this, and it's very extended, so, um, so maybe we continue to need as a fashion where when we read about this, and I take some open remarks from, um, our two finalists here.
Montego Bay, good morning. Good morning, good morning, good morning. This meeting came out of some discussions that we had as the representatives for Montego Bay to get a broader understanding of the challenges that you face as taxi operators, as driver drivers, as J car, or whatever your operator might be, so that when we get the chance to make these changes, we know exactly what to. And come on, we have recognized that the road conditions are very poor across sentinels. And these poor road conditions has been contributing negatively to the maintenance of your respective taxes and your business. Also, the potholes and the flooding disrupt your daily business operations. And these are things that we must go through because as a city, we have to understand these challenges so that we can make the necessary corrections. So that is going to feed into the government's budget because this ought to be the approach towards budgeting in a single country where you get the citizens informed to how monies are spent in terms of resource allocation for development, resource allocation for infrastructure expansion, and so on and so forth. There are some safety concerns, I mean, crime do not pervasive as it relates to the taxi operators. It must also be discussed, the safety of both the taxi operator and their passengers, very, very important. And the overall economic pressure, right? The overall price of fuel, the cost of maintenance for your vehicles, the returns that you get from your investment, the fear that you would charge, is it a fear, fear? Is it a fear, fear? Uh, and these other things, you know, we have to now begin to look at each industry and to see how best as government we can facilitate the advancement of these industries. And we know the taxi system is very important to community, community travel is also very, very important to maintain Montego Bay's dominance as a tourist capital of the world. Because as you know, those of us who travel, those of when you go to a city, it is the taxi operators who really hold the information about the city. Whether it is they want to go to a restaurant, whether it is they want to go to the beach, they want to find a particular landmark in that particular country as a shopper, or it is basically they want to get around, it is the taxi drivers who are of paramount importance. So I want you to continue to think about all these things. I'm going to pass my over to my colleague Senator Allen. And rest assured that we are here to listen to your voices. We are here to understand your concerns and we are here to love those concerns so that we can make a difference when our time comes. And thank you again.
Thank you very much, Andre. Good morning to everyone, good morning. I first want to start by saying to, um, God, to all, so thank you for creating this opportunity for this dialogue to become a very important dialogue. And many of us, all of us are affected by the operations of taxi operators. But more so, we have to be concerned with how the city, the state provides for taxi operators because what you do and the way which you are able to do it is in fact problematic. Right now in the city, we are faced with a lot of congestion. And congestion is not just about how traffic flows. Although a significant part of how traffic flows is the access points and the very push-up transport centers. And in my discussions with some here or elsewhere, there's a recognition that there's certain provisions that need to be made in order that we can have our congestion through the city. I know that taxi operators know one's operating rules, even though sometimes they will have made other rules. But we have to look at the reasons that are broken. And sometimes the solution lies in accepting that some of the reasons for the rules being broken are pushed up to the address. For example, many taxis are gathered and take passengers on streets like Hampton Street and Church Street and Union Street, Stride Street, Key Street. And we have to ask why? What do you mean that we don't have a transport service? We have one right here that provides support for people who are in hand and, um, Grand, and Taco, and elsewhere. But then there's a whole slew of other communities that are not least served by a cellular facility. And the question is, how can we find a solution for that? And it is important that we have a dialogue with those who are operating in the city so that we can together find a solution. And when we find the solution, then we are both responsible. Both the operators, and actually, three of us are responsible. Taxi operators are responsible to adhere to the rules. Users of taxis have the responsibility to operate by them. And the state has a responsibility to operate by them. So my reason for being here today is to hear the concerns and together we can find some solutions so that going forward, we can have a bit of monitoring and it's a parish in terms of the issues that we need to operate. So I want to thank you, Andre, for bringing this together. And I'm sure when we came from, even when, well, even here, what I can concern and we need to formulate and propose what we're going to advance sentience. So thank you very much, Andre. I think I need to hand back over to Andre, baby.
See, the Jamaican economy has been going through a transitional period. And what does this mean? This means that we're moving out of the whole idea of operating an economy that restricts the productivity of its members to finding the solutions that will enhance both labor and total factor productivity. One of my students did a specific research on how traffic contributes to loss of overall economic output. And the numbers proved to be very significant. So the idea of reducing traffic in Jamaica and for us in Montego Bay is of utmost importance. And sometimes you have town and country planners who are not privy to the local underpinnings of what contributes to the traffic, what contributes to the congestion. And as a result, in order for us to be able to advise them properly, we need your advice first. And that is very important. We want to open the floor for questions. However, we don't want it to be go on deaf ears. So we are waiting on Cory Phillips to get here, the next Minister of Transport, so that we have proper representation from the People's National Party to be able to log your issues and to pay those issues real. But the challenges continue, right? The challenges continue. As Senator Allen said, we know you don't want to break the law. We know you don't want to be on a road, but sometimes it happens. And the reason why it happens is because many of you believe that you're in a war against the court and co system because of how they present themselves. They're not facilitators of taxi drivers in terms of once you want to get done. They're not facilitators of your daily operation. I mean, some of you don't even have a place to park and load properly. Some of you get unrest tickets. Some of you don't have the right understanding of your rights as the police for the law. So these are things that are very important. These are things that we want to discuss. And for us here in Montego Bay, what we generally want to see as a People's National Party is to get some level of civility being displayed by both our taxi drivers, the policemen, and the patrons. Because that is when we recognize that we are running a modern city. And the statement remains, a developed country is not judged by the amount of people who own cars privately. A developed country is judged by the amount of people who use public transportation. Right? And that is a fundamental fact that we have to understand that. When I'm in London, for example, the richest person you can think of takes a London cab. Doctors, lawyers, Indian chief, everybody takes public transportation. Whether it wants to be the London cab, it wants to be a private seven, 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 seven cab, or it's a Lisa, or it's the train, or it's the bus. So these are the things that we want to discuss now to see how, as a people, we can put measures in place to make your job become more useful. Because the more people rely on public transportation, the more business there is for the taxi line. And therefore, the better economic, local, motion, transportation system. So bear these things in mind and see what is happening. So I'm going to turn my over to the mayor of Sacon San Thomas and he can open the floor on what's the answer and the solution. So, Tom, I ask you, some things are being recorded.
Very thanks very much. They also believe my advice really has sound, they need to buy some public transportation. But it is a man who drives a car, he's so far, he's driving seven, 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 seven cab. He's a private car, he's a taxi, taking him from a, in the transportation. So it's not that level because true is people who are extremely productive, who don't want to spend their time driving from a transport center and give it towards it. In first point of fact, in the local side, most of the time, it's a driver, a taxi operator, and then it's often tourists from the area. And you get the first attention of, where, imagine, you have a very broken accident, and you have, oh, whatever. And say the tourists from Montego Bay are driving from there. Two hours of complete, man, and you want to, 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 to enjoy the country. I say that to say it's very important to this community, society, this project, and this economy and this function. You know, you keep so many years of a ride, and again, talk away from further, especially when you have some bad words going here. And you try to play a little bit in further, right? Um, to me, they have to be parried by both means. And if we don't have that public system, we don't care. And some people look at the system in that there's some areas that have partly that public, um, transport rules. And then something in the United States, they call it a facial day, where we are, we have four, five people and four, five special day that we can't make it.
Oh, that's too smart for that, don't you mind?
Well, that's the biggest case that we expand the city, you know? Because we are small, we have to apply to the future, especially on a day. Um, and then they're very busy, hard at home, you must be people. I think we said some comments.
Any suggestions, any?
Our suggestions.
Anything we are unhappy with? That is, yes.
I'm put up on a presentation.
Good afternoon.
Well, my question, my question really is, they're very similar. Maybe it's not the greatest, uh, I operate now, so, uh, I wouldn't, you know, wish to be with you.
Okay.
My mind, everyone.
Morning, morning.
I'm back, sir. All right, so, we get tickets, I would rate it, I'm happy, I'll be back.
All right.
See you, Doc.
All right. The whole body now. But you did it. But you're not good, man.
I have not experienced, I have experience. So when I agree that someone there to replace me, well, then, well, that person, at some point, will feel the same way. Like, I'm leaving, and if someone replace that person, so this issue will never address. I think I've been over, over, over so much, right? And in, in, in any sector, we have that. I thought, well, I didn't see this here, but I think we have half a month, we're waiting. Because it looks like if you're doing something, and if you're doing it right, then it's not quite wrong. You're not to do it on purpose, but it's just common sense. Doesn't mean you're trying to explain.
So you have a, any specific example, what you're talking about?
All right, so, uh, what was, uh, earlier, so now this may be mentioned. When I just started, um, each year, I think two times a year, the roads would be open and closed.
The what?
The rules.
Right.
They would be open and no, say, one, uh, such a rate, so that's it.
Right.
But currently from 2018, they opened the rules, and the rules was in, you know, that not been closed.
Okay.
So, we need, you know, there's a.
It's hard to open.
Currently from 2018, I've never seen that in any history. Like, it's a process that I have no honor, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. Wonder if you would repeat this, I have a legal party, what party? Sorry, I show pity in the taxi, I check. No, I don't want to, you're asking a serious question, right? I'm trying to just, I'm just probably, and you jump on us, because last summer was first meeting, and you have a competition all the time. Would you consider, right, the recommendation from JP, a reference, or something like that? You, you ask the kids, right, and, uh, the JP insurance, um, the definitely, oh, accident insurance, or whatever, who doesn't know, oh, we need it now. These are recommendations you have put, and these things work because if you have the proper documentation for someone, and you should pay insurance, and they have a good record, to say, you know, they have an accident, there's someone that's in there, it's okay, it's safe to, to hire this person. But right now, I'm seeing here, if you're giving up, well, accident, I'm just gonna, because they just can't make sure that's a, oh, second, everything is. And if you're just, like, maybe just focus in on, I can be, I can focus in on standing up, anyone. Yeah, and then, even in the morning, obviously, comes the, the, the traffic, that is something. I thought it was on the air, like, I'm hoping this is, the byproducts of this not being real. Something I should have told you, it's a very, I, so, I'm, 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 I'm just here for it. And especially to, to wait and work, and what I do not implement things in place at the same time to, to make it more better for you, to give you exceptional, um, I mean, exception for your circumstances. Sometimes it's time, uh, and the result, you are going to, that's, or it's like, here's a, maybe, because I think, I thought that's, it's been done, it's, I, and they just know, so, and that's what I say, so, not going anywhere. And when you're reading, we need a lot of people to reach that level. We are able to do that, talk, we will change this, we are still, if I'm not only willing to get caught for things to change, it's going to be whole, different. Enjoy this one.
Now, what are two things that they want to see change or improve upon?
All right, so, the first thing that I'd like to ask you, because I'm, I'm getting sick for a while. The open, I don't want, should not be open, and, and, and to be honest, it is open on, probably to come. Um, oh, me, when I'm, I'm, this someone did it, open the road, it's up.
All right.
It's a good point, it's a right.
I'm happy.
Are you ready?
No.
So, so, they opened up the road from 2018, you know, it was for a profit, that's for. And, 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 so what I'd like to see, I would like to see the entire taxi, um, of work. The entire taxi, overall, I would like to see a separation of taxi and government. What do I mean? Every part of the economy, they always use the taxi, as I would say, we don't need it at all.
That's true, of course.
So, meanwhile, if you're supposed to get a fair raise, and, and if it's part of it, they will stay there, it's our, we, we're relation, it's there. Because it will affect them on that, uh, scale. So I'd like to see a separation where it's minus by four year old, or twenty five. Um, that's one. So, the road must be open on a basis of demand. Should not be just open right there. Sensors need to be carried out to see if whatever rule required by taxi and, are, so it must be done on, on that basis. And three, uh, as it really is a fear raise, it should be on a basis of sensors, meaning, um, each year, you see, you try to feel the operation costs to see if the drivers have a disadvantage. As I guess right now, I can, as long as I remember, drivers always pay a disadvantage when you come out here. So these things need to be, you know, heard, like, I think they're legit.
Before, I would have to ask, I would like to put this question to the taxi operator. And sometimes, because I'm an economist, I tend to look at things from both sides, right? Sometimes they talk about a fear raise, which is really an increase in the price of the service that you're offering. I was wondering if a reduction in the gas tax, and that being passed through to lower gas prices, if that could compensate for a fear raise in any situation. So I just want you to think about it and then give us some answers.
Yes, sir. Yes, what you do.
State your name, I insist.
I, 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 I.
Charlie Crowe, yeah.
I mean, this part, as I said before, I am a great taxi driver here, uh, on the last one here. So as the gentleman said, like, yeah, when you're doing this, you're, you're there. Um, as he was saying, as Cory Hammond was saying, whenever time you're doing business, we'll get a new person, and we'll, as he said.
You tell enough and be aware.
Go on, Thomas, I appreciate, I also, and, 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 and I, I, yes, you know, here, we can, we are stopped. We don't commit, I just, one day, the two days, I'm in, eight, two thousand dollars. So that in four days later, now, let's, my opinion, I guess, the, the road champion, the last, the last set that they passed. It wasn't to, wasn't a bitter, it's a form of taxation. I know the government has said, he expect one year that a function, by now, I'm twenty, thirty six, I'm twenty, thirty six. So, oh, 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 this is, that's it. But I'm not, I'm, I, when the police, the police said, there is two days, and each year, we're coming, in the two days, one to pay, one, so, he said to you, go and explain to the judge, I tell the judge. Yeah, that's right, next thing that affect to us is the hand share, uh, hand share.
Hand share.
Hand share. They, in the normal profession, where somebody come in an offense, for example, a me, a student, a teacher, doctor, anybody, you come in an offense and take away place. So the transport companies, take away your vehicle, the hand share, and this makes the fine fifty thousand, sixty thousand. To be a meanwhile, the people improve all your life. I, we can, we need to have balance. Because it's illegal, it's not in constitution, remember, this is a gay, nice, safe word. Even if a man, he was flying to, 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 etc., this is what I, I see, and he was flying to, to, to. And that is what we, they do against taxi driver, can share, even if that child, uh, they're on the sentence, uh, police, uh, uh, so, if you are operating, meaning, if you're operating in sentence, when you can definitely see the destination sign, and everything, they see, they have a H, represent, so they're going to operate in sentence. But we are using that against the other time. And so, so, I don't think they, 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 they love the child, the road, the last set. It's not an interact to stop him from realizing, uh, our, our, it's very rare. And we can't make it happen, that's right.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm sure when Nikki comes, maybe it will capture some of the issues, as there have been addressed a couple of teams, sir. But the one thing that you mentioned that I would want to underscore and reiterate because it's the same thing I heard from another gentleman here, in terms of the need to identify space, more spaces for taxis to park. Because that has led to much of the congestion and some of the activities that you face. Now, when you try this space and it's implement a transport center, when you work outside of that, you're on the wall. But the objective force must need to find an appropriate location that can facilitate the operating of, um, taxis from those points. And both operators and users of the taxis need to adhere to that in order for it to work. But I think, I'm sorry, this was a point, I would like Andre to address anything else for us, that's all, man.
We have thirty, exactly once, right? And it's a night, every from the city, it starts and such. They have chances of, for us. Whenever you look at the, this are people see, we, we taxi, we are, and number one, who knows how to school, your rights are being, you got. Often, that's the police, they call somebody, so, so, they say, they're going, they're going, capture, no land. There is a rule that not under rights to set up, one, uh, fifty thousand, go by eight hundred, or fifty, one hundred dollars more. If it's only true being that a police sergeant, whatever, can't be, they have to see, collecting, or they drive anything, and being, or someone driving it, and, and that person after they are gone, I, I can't. So because we don't write, and we're already, just own it, and if it is in our feet, and we want, we want, we want. So because we don't know right, and they're already just on it, and if it is in our feet, and we want to, we want, we're, we're, so it is a consequence. Again, even by, they are lights, but they are red for passengers, right? And if they see traffic, that's a reality, when we like that, no, they have to see collecting before. And we, as a taxi operator, we need to spend kind of building our pitch, but you are like, this is not the system. I have been from the last of that separate, the body, the body, and the, the, but what's about police, what's about this city, they're very, very. So we just run around, run around, right? And they don't know that, as many of our police, we start, they're like that, they seem excited. I'll put your eyes on the stage like this, don't guess, and sometimes the taxi, the police start with that, they catch us, they, they are round, right? You want your rights? Yes. I don't think you're around, you're around, a police man that he can't stand, he's not just, right? Right, he, he start right on it, and I start, I say, yeah, you're not the man, he said, what the hell are you? I remember I said, yeah, they're bad, before you guys, they were ticking, they're not right. I like, I said, we don't want to write, so because most of us will come at meeting, as we're getting, so we're right, we don't know. Right, and we are right, and that's right, and that's right, from this meeting, we implement a system. Don't really break down the powers of the police, they are being started. And just, because they are all here to collect and to spread justice across the world. And that's a time, when they found that that's by the power of their power, and no, no, no. Yes. So like, this meeting, this is a system, and like, oh, I know, you guys are like, take something. If you began to start a program, a project, you have been, you are, so that some kind of bring the light on.
Because it's something that Mikael and I discussed, the importance of having an in-depth discussion with operators like Juta, Jacob, Maxish. Because there are some really, there are some serious concerns there in terms of how they are facilitating and their businesses are facilitating in, in tourism. And we are very concerned that this is hard to handle for the people's national party. And yes, we're going to be arranging a ton of, a dialogue, probably what you mean. With, yes, the operators in Europe, in tourism industry, and in particular in your sector. So, we certainly want to come, the comments, but any other countries, we're going to address. We are committed, we are committed to ensuring that operators, local transport operators in tourism, better benefit from tourism. We as a party, we are committed to that. And that is something that is going to require not just legislation, but it's just a reorientation of how we do businesses and how we facilitating S S. Because tourism is considered almost like an export industry. Much of the dollars that we earn in tourism, almost exists of every dollar, is exported or lost deep into the sea. Our aim, our objective is to have that, um, our aim, our objective is to have that move to at least, at least sixty cents. That is our initial objective, for it to move from forty cents to sixty cents and beyond. But it is going to take us making that commitment to ensure that we protect the transport operators who have helped to build the tourism. You have helped to form tourism, today, and our responsibility is to you, to ensure that you better benefit from it. Okay, so we're gonna have that, um, at a later point.
There is. At the end, as we speak, and as well as we speak, in Juta, operators, the Max, the operators, the Shetland operators, the Fiana, Paul, and they are all around. Because what these Uber are charging, there is no way we can charge, we have to go under, at the base of Uber, I pass you to go under.
Mm-hmm, that's true. Do you want my address? Afternoon, everyone. Let me, let me apologize for my late arrival. But I underestimated the traffic, I had to go to Manchester last night, and head to Kingston early, early this morning to come here. So, but I underestimated the traffic coming across this morning. Um, we had a similar meeting, like this, in eastern St. Andrew yesterday. And part of my task is really going around the island, just really listening, hearing what some of the challenges are within the sector itself. Um, no matter where you go across the island, they are similar. Issue of the abuse of the Transport Authority, the police, the issue with parking, the issue with, with the in-drive and the Uber. And just the, well, really, the, the, the approach of the administration of not really having a national plan where transport is concerned. And I think that is the greatest issue that we have. Because if you really don't have a plan, then what you're going to get is a, is a sector that is really a ramshackle sector. And if you, if you look at the sector now, and I mean, just a few minutes ago, I got a call from, from someone who, who assists us, that the Transport Authority today is opening up Hackney carriage license, not only for Kingston and St. Andrew, for all fourteen parishes. So, you know that election is coming, but even though election is coming, there has to be a plan on why you're doing it. Hackney carriage has not come to rural Jamaica since route taxi took over.
That's true.
Eh? So when you're opening Hackney carriage now, they are now going to be competing with the Juta and the Jekyll even more, and competing with Uber and InDrive in the same space, and they're going to be competing with the route taxis. In the instance with the Hackney carriage, in the instance with the Hackney carriage, he can drop off and pick up and he have no route. So he is going to be able to go through certain, where the route taxi man have to stick to, his route. He can go everywhere, anywhere. So, our approach and my question to the minister has always been, where's the national plan? Because if you look at Kingston and St. Andrew with the J U T C, and I was looking at the.
Yeah, more than budget, yes.
Even though half of the fleet is hydrogen buses, they expected to spend more on fuel the next financial year, about two point nine billion dollars. Nearly three billion dollars, haven't you? They have taken buses off of the J U T C routes and sending them to Saint Mary, to Saint, Saint Thomas. Eh? To places that you could approach the private investor like yourselves in filling those routes and team. They get more buses. And for them to be open up at the Hackney carriage, islandwide, is more political than sensible coming down into an election. And that for me is an abuse of power by the minister and the Transport Authority. When we get back into power, a lot of what they're doing, we are, we have to revamp the whole public transport sector. But the Transport Authority need to go back to its core function. Core function, which is not enforcement, but is to regulate the sector itself. Because the same man who is regulating, can't be in force at the same time. Because you have a question, whose interests does he have? A second thing we have to look at, and councillors may not agree with me, but you can't have parking for the public transport sector in the hands of the municipal council, while it is the same Transport Authority who is prosecuting you. Because for them to issue you a license, you suppose have a termination point. And that termination point should have adequate parking. And you're getting a license with a termination point, but not adequate parking. And then at the same time coming to prosecute you for something that the state has failed to provide for you. And that in itself caused traffic congestion. Then you become the one that is prosecuted, because the state has failed to hold up its part of the bargain. Right now, in Kingston and St. Andrew, they cannot issue, even though that they have offered route taxis from Halfertree to Papin, Halfertree to Three Mares, uh, Half, uh, Papin to downtown Kingston, to Crossroad, to Harbour View, they cannot issue one license because they don't have any parking for them. So it shows me that the government, in the nine years, has failed to improve the sector. What they have done is issue more license without any data. And we're not saying that, that that man not supposed to eat a food, but that bigger time has come where we stop treating the public transport system as a hustle and treat it as a business. Because every man who, every man who buy a car is an investor in a business. Same chief that go with the Jekyll and the, and the Juta man, is a saver in the cheat, the route taxi man. And if you keep on treating them as a hustle, then the mentality, mentality cannot change for them to do any better. But if you have a route that you're taking, and you did license for twenty, you don't expect a man to make money on top of the bad rule you have, eh? It can't work. So we have to really look at the sector differently. Right, to see what part the state play in the J U T C, we believe that there is a role for the J U T C. Not only Kingston and St. Andrew, and Martin Gobin, are going to town centers. But before that can happen, they have to fix what is broken in the Kingston and St. Andrew. We believe that Spanish Town to Downtown Kingston, Fortmore to Downtown Kingston, and other municipalities, such as James, where Lightyear can carry bulk of persons, while route taxis take them into the, into the communities. It can work, but everybody has to be a partner with an system that can work for everyone. We don't believe in taking anybody out of the system, but we believe in revamping the system. Structure it in a way that everybody can make a money, and we treat it as an investment. Transportation contributes probably the third highest to GDP. It affects our productivity, and if we are not a productive nation, then we cannot be a successful nation. So we want to start from there. We have looked at a better policy in how it is that the associations no longer just become a transit for licensing, but also a lobby group for those who they represent. How is it that we can allow them to get the same concessions that Juta man get to bring buses? That they can get the same concessions, that their members can get buses as conducive for public transport? That's what we're looking at, going to cast a stage revenue, but to play bus productivity. That's where we're looking down the road. We are going to be tough on those right share. Now, and we have to be tough, because part of the responsibility of the state is to protect its citizens. And those riding in a, one of those right shares. They are not protected, neither by insurance, nor by those companies that the drivers represent. And if we want to bring competition, then we believe that no matter how big these corporations are, they have to abide by the rule of law of the country that we are owners of. And if you cannot abide by the rule of law, then you cannot operate, but we are responsible to protect our local industries. We're not saying that they cannot operate here. But you have to go through the process, because it can't, a route taxi man or even a Hackney carriage, where they have to apply for a license, have to get a red plate, they have to pay the higher insurance. And then you have a man who have a white plate, who don't have the same insurance, they have to save to pay the same fees, and work in the same space. And then you expect that he's going to, the man with the red plate to charge the same as the man with the white plate. Now, some people can't sing so. And we have to protect those who abide by the law, and get those who don't abide by the law. The same way if you have a boot who running a white plate robot, you're going to have to take off the same white plate. You're going to force him to go and get a red plate, then why is not the same for the same in-drive and the Uber man? Eh? It has to be the same. You can't have one rule for one and a different rule for the other. So. I know who they know. At the end of the day, it is going to take planning, it is going to take coordination, not only with us as a government, but with every player in the sector. We believe that the sector ought to be represented on the boards, Transport Authority Board, even the J U T C. Because if you want to bind into the sector, then you who are a part of it have to have a say in how we move forward. So. What establishes now is unsustainable. Now, we've been trying this model for a very long time, and what's as broad is more poverty to those within the sector itself and chaos within the sector. So we have to re, go back to the drawing board and relook at how it is that we deal with public transport. Need Hackney carriage, route taxis, or even those within the, the tourism sector, and those who are doing the ride sharing. Ride sharing is something that is a part of the world right now, but they have to abide by the laws of the world. Alright, so, I hope I answered some of the questions that you have, and I'm open to more questions, if you have more.
Well, I have to say that, um, you know, trying to begin, I have to say that it seems like you were in the room when much of the talking was going on earlier, you used some of the same words that were used by representatives here. For example, the importance of recognizing that every operator in the industry is an investor and should be treated accordingly. You spoke about the importance of the, the. You spoke about the importance of the, the management of the rules and how that should not create more problems. It should then to alleviate the problems and therefore must be addressed. And also, the need for transport centers and pop-up places to stop or termination points referred to. Because I will tell you, you are carrying your own expenses. Much of the congestion which impacts, as you said, productivity, much of the congestion in the city of Montreal from Purry, Mac Street, Gooden Street, Church Street, King Street, every street. Central Street everywhere is because there's not enough termination points to facilitate the proper, um, operation of transportation, the flow of traffic and the flow of pedestrians. And the other kind of activities. You're right. If you put something in place, everybody has a responsibility and a role to take. The government has a role, the operator has a role, and the users have a role and responsibility. Because if we're going to get to a place where we're consider ourselves a nation that is growing and improving in productivity, then we are going to have to make sure that the rules that are implemented are indeed adhered to by all. And we should not be partial and end up in a situation where we are abused by the transport authority or abused by the police. So thanks very much, Mikail, for that. I don't know if, out of what Mikail had to say, there were any follow-up questions, especially from the operators?
Yeah, the Transport Authority, there, there, there are some government entities that should be isolated from political influence. With PMP administration. And I can't talk about a PMP administration. There are some entities that ought to be isolated from political influence. Because when you get politics in the midst of it, it's just like how I talk about setting up, of, of the bus spheres. Setting up bus spheres should not be left up to the minister to decide when it is that bus spheres are set. It ought to go to an entity like the O U R or any such entity that you know that is every two years, just like how we said toll, toll go to the office of the, um, toll authority. It ought to go to an entity that it is not left up to the political director to set bus spheres. Because then what we end up at? Is that when they keep on delaying the setting of a bus sphere, it affects new operator. And then where the term come for you to get a pop-up? The political director, it's a word, the public can't take a twenty or a thirty percent increase. Then the public is a loser and you are the loser. So the Transport Authority should ought to be the same. You ought to be a regulator, giving the government data to make proper policy directives to deal with public transport. Leave the enforcement to the puggies. And we also went as far as saying, just like you have in New York City. Set Monticabie, Kingston, Portmore. We have the Metro Police that deals with parking and public transport. Then a body like that can be created within the puggies force to deal with the enforcement of the law. Because I am big on enforcement. Eh? Because we have all the laws on the books, but we're not enforcing it. And those who can't abide by the law, then have to get out of the sector. It's as simple as that. But the Transport Authority should not be enforcing while it is that they are regulating. We are firm on that, and that's not something that we are going to change our policy on when it comes to the Transport Authority. Judge Duryam execution. First.
By William Street, that's that, I only provide cars. That's forty, I mean forty three hundred. For guys now, and can now, they find somebody on their car. But if I got, and that's that is what we do. That's down good stuff. The people looking at both. So my answer is, the Transport Authority and police, obviously. Whenever they come from here and tell you, sir, I have five or six people to park in front of the pressure people. Then my tell you, they can't park here. And I'm saying that parish towns are paying money for the village and the residents.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we ruled, we ruled elaborate. In tandem, so we got some white flag, right? You can tell the difference. And they give up their rules from, from twenty eighteen, I don't know. People, they, they feel, they buy all the, the car, the car, the car, the car, they call it, I did this.
And that's why earlier in my presentation, I spoke about I have to provide some space. It is a revenue earner for them, but their interest is not the transport sector. As I said, that's why I said it's a revenue earner. But their interest is not the transport sector. And that's why I said that we have to find a way. First, we have to pass this open licensing system. Put some plans in place in how the sector will move forward. They can't listen, issue license and not know where we're putting them. Right? Well, we will have to wait in government first, because it don't look like these people are ready to stop it. Next week, Friday, Thursday and Friday, we have Standing Finance Committee in Parliament. That is where the minister, the head of the Transport Authority, and the head of the ministry will sit in front of all of us as parliamentarians. That's where I'm going to pose my questions. That's where I'm going to pose my questions, because as I said, I was surprised this morning when I heard that they are opening up evil taxis. Um, hack the carriage for rural Jamaica. That cannot work in the system that we are having, that we have right now. That is going to create chaos. In a system that is already chaos. Eh? So we have to get where some department within the ministry deal with the parking syst- the parking, um, situation. I believe that we have to treat not only passengers, but the operators in a way that would treat other industries. Modern transport center. In half a tree, they don't have enough parking for the, for the buses. That are on J U T C, but yet still they don't allow them to come in the transport center. And you still don't have enough J U T C buses to fill the transport center. Then you go out there and you prosecute them. So there is a, there is just a disconnect between policy intention and what it is that you're expecting from the sector. And that is why I think that we have approached the transport sector one, because I'm treating them like hustlers. They believe says just poor people, just a try and make a living, that's why they open it up and they leave it open. Because I'm showing them, when the minister hear what I've said here today, I'm sure somebody ever share to them. Eh? Every time I meet with the sector insider, so somebody shares something with me before I even leave. Right? I mean, there's no secret what I'm saying. But his response is going to be that they're not trying to stop poor people from making a living. But it's not about stopping poor people from making a living. It's about creating an industry that can make a better living.
That's right.
You understand? But putting some pride in it. That they can be treated better. When the reason why they can't issue these new licenses in Kingston and route taxis and all is because the K S C is telling them that there is no parking for the operators. And if there's no parking for them, they are not willing to endorse it for them to be able to issue the license. You understand? But once, once the Transport Authority and, and you can see we're policy wise, Transport Authority is bringing a stick, the Ministry of Local Government is doing another thing. And the two not joining in the middle. So there is no nexus between the two. I won't say there's no communication, but the aims are different. Third quarter of the year, all the service industries when I see any of it, they give transport by one percent growth. And in the fourth quarter, the service industry transports a one point five percent growth. So when you look at all the service industries. So while we're very complicated, those leaders that came from the country and love, they, they, they chose to implement that in store. And no one in the I O J report answers something completely different. Why they are complaining that they are the best performing service center? Why are they complaining that they are, they are complaining and saying that they complain? How do you explain those results to these delegates who they understand it clearly?
You see, in economics, you have what we call tradables and non-tradables. Tradables are goods that you cannot import or export. Now, you look at agricultural products, you can import those from abroad, you can export those to abroad, those are what we call tradables. Now, what we saw last year was that because of Hurricane Barry, as well as because of the government mismanagement of domestic economy, the tradables saw a decline. But non-tradables, like transportation that is on the domestic floor, that is less influenced by global economic conditions. I mean, they are because of tourism and so on and so forth. But as you know, they are not goods that we import from abroad, they are goods that are on the services, that are on the ground. So these non-tradables, because of the significance of them to domestic economic activity, we saw an uptick in these non-tradables. And what does this mean? When you look across the level of the global economy, all the countries are what we call practicing anti-globalization policies. Meaning that they are internalizing their economic activities. You see with Donald Trump, the import of tariffs on other countries, you see with England exiting the Brexit of the, of the EU. And it is happening all around, where countries are putting measures in place to reduce their reliance on outside economies. Jamaica being a smaller island developing state has a high reliance on outside economies. What do I mean by high reliance? Over fifty percent of all of our exports go to the United States. Over forty percent of what we import comes from the United States. Over seventy percent of the remittances that people send back to Jamaica comes from the United States. So we have a high relationship with the US dollar. Now, with this high relationship with the US dollar, it makes us susceptible to external shocks that happen in the US, because those impact us negatively. We have to put buffers in place to mitigate whatever external conditions there are that are affecting us domestically. And it's not just about the transport industry, because you are just one industry. It's about the finance industry, it's about the manufacturing industry, it's about the healthcare industry, it's about the education industry. We have to begin to realize what will it take for us to put buffers around these industries so that when negative things occur abroad, we are less impacted. And that is why we are here today, to understand the industries better, so that when we get into power, we will be in a position to make necessary changes so that we can develop what we call real resilience, and that is what I'm talking about.
Can learn from some of your experiences. And that is one, that is an interesting one that I didn't even think about in how it is that we move forward.
Speaking of a couple of things.
Yeah, so I take that one. There's something that we can change. Oh, turn it on. Um, one last question, and a last story, just to worry. That you still can't come off of that main route. But once you're outside of that radius, then you're to be prosecuted. Right? But I think that because you may not know the law itself, you are not able to stand up to them. I know, that's what I said, there, in my estimation, there's an abuse of that law. And, you know, let me tell you. And maybe the brother mentioned it earlier. I've been sharing this port- this portfolio from twenty sixteen. If it is one sector that is very disunited, is the public transport sector. You are more political than the PMP and jail people together. And I'm talking clearly. Eh? So when the president is of one party, if his party is environmental and I do suffer on, he will never admit to that being suffer on. Right? And what I find is that they don't speak to the wider sector, the leadership of the organization of them. They speak amongst themselves. So when they make decisions, they don't make it for the wider sector, but they make it for a few that is their friends in the sector. So that's why we said, moving forward, we want to broaden the base of those who are representing, that you can have a wider, bigger voice in the decision-making when policy is concerned. Eh? Second, is that those of you who are treating it as a business have to help to weed out the bad ones out of it. Because the majority are hardworking and following the rule of law. Might get frustrated because the police and the Transport Authority might come down on them. But that happens because you have the few that make it worse on you. So you have, you have to help to weed it, weed out the system. Secondly, is that you have to be welcome to change. Because if we are going to be putting modern transport facilities, you can't put three or four or five of them in one local, let's use Monte Gobe as an example. And the gentleman made a critical point, is that you're supposed to be able to drop off at one spot. That goes, we're supposed to can't come off of that taxi. And in the same space, find another taxi to carry them to another location. That's just common sense. So you might, if you are to find a land that's adequate enough, it may not be in the center of the town itself, but it might be on the outskirts. You understand? And that's why I was saying, we want you to be a part of that dialogue. But you have to be susceptible to change, after what change, to be able to get change. Eh? Mr. Price, then you've been trying, um, to accept change. Question, when you are going to Parliament and pass a law, is it, is it worth for the people or against it? No, it ought to work for the people. But most of these are working against people. Yeah, but, but hear what, hear what I'm going to say to you. Yes, I'm a part of Parliament. But as a opposition member, I can't table a bill. I can argue on the people's behalf. But if you're hard ears and you don't want to listen, even with the current Road Traffic Act, we objected to many sections of it. But because of the supermajority, they passed it. Even with the J U T C right now, we have made multiple suggestions for the sector itself, even to do with the rural system. You understand? And hence why we have put ourselves forward to be elected so that we can change government. The only way we can make that change is by being in government. It's sad to say it. And I know a lot of people said, why the more I see, why you're going to look for us? I can do one I own at it, unless I am the minister of transport to make that change. And I guarantee to you, it will not be business as usual. So my purpose of being in Monte Gobe in St James today, you know, on a Wednesday, I go across the island to have little meetings with the transport sector. As a government in waiting, one of the things that we are trying to embark on is to listen to the various sectors so that we can see what some of the issues are. So that once the PMP is returned to government after the next general election, then we can start acting on some of the low-hanging fruits and formulating policies in some of the things that we have had dialogue with the various sector groups. So this is one such meeting here in, 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 um, Monte Gobe, St James. Um, yesterday I was in, um, Eastern and East Rural St Andrews in the Papin area. Um, and later down I'll be going to other parts of the island and listening to those within the transport sector and the mining sector. So it will be an island-wide thing then? It's an island-wide thing that I've started about a month ago, a month and a half ago, and will continue it as long as we can sustain it before the general elections.